The shelter and backup soft power supply are already in existence and using the existing equipment will save maintenance and cost. This is the improved coverage map for Motorola. Should you allow us to put a tower or antenna up on your water tower?
We don't need to get into that.
You'll find in the packets that we gave you, letters from the Sincere Falls
Control of Lakes Back End.
Police chief, fire chief, and from the animal service that covers. They have all experienced substantial issues with coverage and they would support. I'm adding this site to grant them permission to do that.
The nice part about this is this benefits us working with Shisawak County. Like I say, this river valley presents so many challenges for our communications. And this doesn't change anything because your water tower is already there. Shisaku is willing to let us share some of the equipment. So it's truly a win-win. If we had to put a standalone tower up on our own, it would be well over a million dollars. We're able to pull this off with your assistance and we've been approved for the cost, which is about $350,000. There's countless complaints. As the sheriff, I get a lot of complaints, as everybody knows. The fire department really struggles the most. They probably have the largest volume of calls and they had even switched to somewhat using a cellphone system to get this eye on responding because the radio system, because of hypography, really struggled. So we would just ask for your support. I think we all benefit the whole, both communities because as you know, we respond over here to our mutual aid calls. The police department comes over. My deputies occasionally come over too. So it's a win-win for everybody if we can make this work. Well, thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And what I can tell council is that when we had the water tower painted, we made sure that there's an actual rail on the top of the structure. It allows services to be attached to it like an tennis. And we were hoping for like AT&amp;T or Sprint or somebody like that, but that didn't work out. So I just want the council to know that the water tower will support it. We've got a rail that's up there. The only thing is that when you go to install it, we'll have to know because we keep it locked. So you can't just crawl up under the top of it. And so when would this be done?
Kind of, we work with Motorola. It's kind of on their timeframe. I mean, we would like to have it done probably by midsummer.
It'll take a few months once we have.
Okay. Very good. So I'll check council. Larry comments on this?
No, this is a great thing. Mutual reaching across the river, so to speak, and benefits both cities.
Okay. Mary comments?
I agree. It's a great partnership. I work with Shisawak County as liaison and it just needs everything together.
Okay. Very good. Troy comments?
I agree. So I think a great, great idea and very, very happy to support law enforcement on both sides of the river.
Very good. Thank you. So everybody's in agreement? And so I know that the contract has been reviewed by our city attorney. And so with that, I'll call for a motion to approve the mutual agreement with Polk County and Wisconsin regarding their radio antenna. By Mary, second by Larry. Further discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Coach.
Yeah, thank you. And you don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're welcome to leave unless you want to stay. You certainly can stay. Okay, so I'm on here now. You're on here. That's okay. So item number two on here is duty to investigate the alleged data breach. There are already comments on this. This is something that is Larry Julikheim. This is his area. Go ahead and we have Chad Lemmons here to answer questions or provide any information that's needed. So Larry, it's all yours.
Okay. So based on the comments of the public forum, my assumption is that this is not going to be a very popular thing to do. But I have to point out that as city council people and by mandate of the state, when an allegation is made, it's the responsibility of the city council to protect the city manager residents and to investigate any form of allegation that takes place. So I'm going to go forward and read my statement and because it kind of summarizes the whole situation. During the investigation into the formal complaint grievance submitted to the city council by the city clerk treasurer on July 26, 2021, it was discovered that a possible data breach may have occurred. It is alleged that a resident came to city hall and submitted a data request form September 27, 2021 and was given a copy of the grievance by the city's responsible authority, the city clerk treasurer. Since this grievance was against employees of the city, the grievance was classified as private by state statute. During investigation of this nature, state statute mandates that the only information that can be released is that a grievance exists and the status of the investigation. For instance, the investigation is ongoing. At the time of the alleged release, the complaint was being investigated. The only data that was public was the existence and status. So if the allegation proves true, complaint was a data breach. If the complaint was released to a citizen, the citizen was a person who took private data without permission or statutory authority with intent to use private data for non-governmental purposes, so a data breach occurred. It is the responsibility of the city by state mandate to disclose any possible breach of this nature and to investigate, initiate an investigation, and that is a state mandate. We do not take this action lightly and at the recommendation of the city attorney and the league of Minnesota cities, we must protect our city and its residents from any potential losses resulting from the allegation of data privacy breach and investigation allegations. The information for this is summarized and supported by a letter from our city attorney as a copy of the data request. I'm sorry. The information for this is summarized and supported by a letter from the city attorney as well as a copy of the data request form requesting the data, the public data that were supposed to be included in tonight's council package. As personal liaisons, councilmen regard and myself need to contact the league of Minnesota cities as our insurance carrier and legal representation in this matter for a list of potential investigators. Also going forward, the city must ensure that private data be protected and that non-city employees must not be allowed in the city hall working area behind the counter. So I need to make a motion to initiate an investigation into the alleged data breach as required by state statute.
Okay. That was kind of quick, but I do have a motion, so I'll call for a second.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion by Larry. I've got a second by Mary. Now, discussion. So Troy, comments?
Yeah. I'm, I'm, thank you, Mr. Lemmons, for being here. Can we, I'm sorry. Can we, can we read from your letter?
It's public, it's, it's a letter to the city, so you guys go ahead.
Public information. Is that a read with the rest of the council?
Mine for me.
And this would be Mr. Lemon's recommendation. The first paragraph, he basically explains what Larry had said. And Mr. Lemon says, upon information and belief, the city's responsible authority released the complaint contrary to our direct advice, that only the existence and status of the complaint were public data. That's correct?
Correct.
Okay. Who, whose information and belief are you referring to?
We're referring to information believed received during the investigation conducted by Minnesota. Because most other information we've received over the time. Could you speak up for this?
Okay. Sorry. Hold microphone. Thank you.
I should know better because I was here last time. That information belief was based on the information received during the solo investigation together with other information that's been received. I want to make it clear, the reason for the need of investigation is no one knows exactly what happened and who did what. No one, no one should be accused before or even, there should be no implication whatsoever that anyone has broken the law. But this is a serious law. Data privacy has caused problems for other cities and has resulted in losses, fines. So it does need to be investigated, but it needs to be investigated from the standpoint that we don't know what exactly happened and who, and who, and who is involved in this action, if any. So at this point, all that should be done is an investigation and let the, and let the report of the investigator will deal with that in the future. But at this point, no one should be, it should be assumed that no one broke the law. Though it is clear that the law hasn't broken, but no one should be presumed to have broken any statute. I'm, I'm clear on that point.
It's clear that the law has been broken?
Yes, it is because.
But not the statute?
No. It's clear the law, law is statute, was broken because the complaint was released to a private citizen. We know that. We know that happened. How it happened, we don't know for sure. And at this point, that's why you need an investigation, to find out how it happened.
And so that information is your information, is what you're basing on?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
And the belief? That's your belief as well? And what's that common?
Well, information belief is a standard legal stating, stating saying that we've received information that would indicate something did happen. Do we know exactly what happened? No, we don't. You know, we know exactly what happened? No, we don't. Do we know who did it? No, we don't. We know something did happen. That's why you need an investigation.
Okay. And the city's responsible, responsible authority released the complaint contrary to our direct advice, that only existence and status of the complaint were public data. So the existence and status is public data and could be expressed, right?
Under the statute, the existence of a complaint and the statute investigation is public data. But the nature of the complaint is not. That is private data. It remains private data as long until such time as the city council finds that an offense had occurred and that action should be taken. So at the time it was released, based on what we've been told, what we know, it would have been a violation of the statute.
Okay. And this direct advice that you gave to the responsible authority, when was that given?
That was given by, I believe by my partner, Patrick Kelly.
I think I asked when was it given? Can I have a date?
And that's it. I'm an ex, now let me be clear. I believe it was given by Mr., by Mr. Patrick Kelly. When I don't know for sure. But we know that the report was released sometime last, early, late last summer or last fall.
Okay. But you have a request date and you have, you have the data was requested, but how would the responsible authority know if, if you didn't give that information to the responsible authority before? I mean, we don't, we don't know what date this direct advice was given.
Which is why you need to have an investigation.
Well then, so probably the investigation is looking up what date you gave the direct advice?
What date it was released.
But if you're accusing somebody of doing something against the statute, don't you have to have, wouldn't you have to give them this direct advice on a, on a certain date?
Ah, Councilman Aaron, so I think I'm clear that we are not presuming anyone did anything wrong, but we do know it was released, which is why it has to be investigated.
When did this data breach occur?
I've just said sometime late last, late last summer or early last fall.
It wasn't August 13th of 2021?
Look, I'm not going to sit here and answer questions about something that needs to be investigated by all the facts.
Well, I would, I would suggest that August 13th, 2021 does need to be investigated.
Then that's the date it should be investigated. But again, that is why you need to hire an outside investigator to deal with this issue.
And Solo did tell us that the council members do have the right to have the username and password of the surveillance footage. Is that correct?
That's not relevant to what we're talking about.
Well, it is because I'm referring to August 13th, 2021.
But we're talking about release of a complaint. And that's all we're talking about.
What happened on January 6th, 2022? Surveillance footage removed at that date, was there not?
I don't know about that. That's not an issue I've been asked to deal with. I've asked you of one issue only, the release of the complaint.
Well, the private investigator Solo did say that we have the right, I think we all heard it, to receive the username and password of used surveillance footage. So we should have that right to do that, just as council members, regardless of the investigation.
We're here to discuss one issue, and that issue is whether or not a data breach occurred.
And I'm suggesting that a data breach could have occurred on August 13th as well as January 6th of 2022.
If a data breach occurred on January 6th, then that's a separate investigation that needs to be conducted.
Oh, okay.
I'm talking solely about the release of the, of the complaint. That's all we're talking about.
The data was removed without a data request form being submitted. There was a data request form submitted, correct?
The point is this, you can request any data you want, but it can't be released if it's private data.
The requester was told to meet, was told about the need to check with the attorney. That is on the, that is on the data request.
Again, I was not directly involved in that. I'm not going to, that's another reason why you need to investigate exactly what happened.
It's not.
That's why I'm making it clear. No, that's why I'm making it clear. Oh, Mr. Councilmember, let me finish my statement, which is why I'm making it clear that there should be no presumptions made until the investigation occurs.
So this information, the source of this information and your belief, are you suggesting in your letter that this justifies reclassifying the mayor as an employee and consequently removing him, his public figure status? Is that correct?
That's a completely separate issue.
But that is a decision we're supposed to make tonight, is it not?
No, it's not. You're, you're, you're only here to make one decision at this moment. That is to decide whether or not to, to retain an investigator to investigate a release of the complaint, which is a breach of the statute 13.343.
But that, that was in your written notification. That was something that you suggested that we deliberate on, is determining whether the mayor is a public.
Again, is a separate issue. That's a separate issue.
Okay. Anything else, Troy?
Oh, yeah. I got one.
Okay.
Taylor's Falls Personnel Policy, the applicability, says that the personnel covered, except as otherwise authorized and specifically provided, this policy applies to all employees of the city except the following, all elected officials. So if we are going to reclassify the mayor as an employee, that goes directly against our city code.
Again, I'm going to repeat myself. We are not here, I'm not here, to discuss where, what the status of the mayor is, what the status of the city council members are. I'm here simply for the purpose of advising the city on whether or not you need to, you need to investigate a potential breach, a potential violation of Minnesota's, of Minnesota's Chapter 13, the Data Privacy Act. That's all you're here to do.
This is a quote.
To be clear, that's all I'm here to do.
Okay. Well, then I, you said it's okay to read from your letter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. The city needs to provide written notification to CZA have conduct and investigate, conduct an investigation into the breach and prepare a report of the facts and results of the investigation. I recommend the city notify Mayor Boothheim as well, given his possible status as an employee. Aren't you suggesting that we reclassify the mayor as an employee?
I am basic, I'm giving you advice based on my legal analysis. And I will point out the fact that there is a analysis, an opinion letter issued by the state of Minnesota concerning city council Minneapolis, in which the issue of whether or not city council members were considered employees or not. And that report left it up to the city to make the decision.
So if, if, that is up to us. So if, I guess we should be made aware, all council members should also be made aware, that if the mayor is classified as an employee, that due to the same statute 1343 subdivision 15, I'm not sure if you picked that one out or not, dissemination of data to law enforcement, private personnel data or data on employees that are confidential data under section 13.39 may be disseminated to law enforcement agency for the purpose of reporting a crime or alleged crime committed by an employee or for the purpose of assisting law enforcement.
Keep in mind that a violation of the, of the Data Praxis Act, which is chapter 13, is a civil violation. It's not a criminal violation.
Okay.
Though it can be.
Then I'm going on the record again as requesting to view surveillance footage of August 13th, 2021. I'm also requesting to view surveillance footage of January 6th, 2022.
Councilmember, you have that right, but that is not why I'm here to discuss that. If you wanted to make that request, you have a right to do so.
Subdivision three of statute, I just, subdivision three of statute 13055 delayed notice, the notification required by this section may be delayed. So this is on notifying the employee. If a law enforcement agency determines a notification will impede an active criminal investigation.
And as far as I know, the Shisawak County Sheriff is not conduct, is not conducting a criminal investigation in any of these matters that the city's been dealing with.
Okay.
Therefore, there is no ongoing, there is no ongoing criminal investigation.
Then my question would be if a restraining order has been filed against the employee or public official, release of this information would impede a criminal investigation. So does a restraining order against the employee or public official delay notification? I'm guessing that would just be an employee.
Well, first of all, there is no restraining order I'm aware of in this matter.
Yeah, it's all hypothetical. If, if there were one?
I'm not going to deal with hypotheticals.
Well, you deal with, you deal with information and belief, so.
Information belief is not hypothetical. Information belief is facts which we are aware of, but cannot, cannot determine precisely. Therefore, an investigation is required.
Mary?
Upon, I have just one more comment.
Okay. Go ahead, Troy.
Upon my information and belief and notification by a legal counsel, that pursuing Attorney Lemon's required action, which was in your letter, would constitute an act of retaliation and discrimination against a city employee, I will not be supporting this. And I do have to say with all due respect, Mr. Lemmons, I have a letter from another His letter intimidates me a little more than yours. And I just think, I just think you're in over your head on this one.
Okay. So with that, I'm going to move on? That's enough?
I'm not going to.
That's enough? That's enough. We're fine. Mary, her comments on this?
I would like to reiterate to the community, this is not a process of somebody's guilty before even investigating. This is an investigation only. Our council has to vote whether we want to move on the investigation. They don't have enough information. They do not have enough information to make any, and they will not make any generalized configuration of what went on without somebody saying, you have to start the investigation. This is first and foremost. No one's guilty. No one's suppressing. No sidelines for this and no sidelines for that. It's just a motion to make available somebody to, okay or not okay, an investigation to proceed on a potential breach.
Okay. Thank you. Mary? Chad, I've got one question for you, and that's, on this action, am I required to reclusive myself? Is this something I can vote on?
You could vote on this.
Okay. So with that, I've got a motion by Larry. I've got a second by Mary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Okay. That motion carries. Thank you. That was a nice discussion. And we're on to the next item. And that is, the rest of them get a little bit easier here. Probably won't take this long. So what we're looking at here is a request from Public Works. The request from Public Works is to pay the invoice for the lift station pumps. This would be Public Works. Mary, are you knowledgeable of this?
Yes. This is something that was approved back in July of 2021 to go and replace the, and reconfigure the water pumps. I know Larry was part of the process at that time. It was approved and they were approved for $56,000 to do this. $50,000 is being requested to pay out the vendor for this with the additional six for labor costs, which will be followed up once it's installed. They can't install it until the weather is warmer.
Okay. So Mary, is this paid for from the infrastructure fund?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Comments on this? Either member?
My agenda says this was previously approved after July 2021 council meeting. I'm just wondering, why are we considering it again?
We didn't have to. I just put it out there for courtesy.
And also to determine which fund it's paid for, which is the infrastructure fund.
Just curious, it wasn't on your agenda.
Yep. That's good.
Okay. We'll get through this.
We will.
Okay. So everybody's okay with this? I'm going to call for a motion then to approve the request from our Public Works Department is to pay the invoice. It is due, it's overdue. It is for, well, it's due today, actually. No, it's overdue, I guess. All right. It's for $50,030.70 paid for from our infrastructure fund. So do I have a motion to approve this? By Larry? Do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary? Those in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Now we're on to the next area. This is another request from Public Works. This is to pay for a burned down porta potty. And what we initially thought was this porta potty is actually owned by Rose Sewer Service. If it caught fire, you probably have it. Sorry?
That's public information that he just handed.
Got it.
You can read that out loud for everybody.
Certainly, certainly will. Okay. Is the porta potty up at the Heritage Park was lit on fire.
Yeah.
We found out quickly that all you have to do is light the toilet paper roll and the entire thing burns. And it burns rapidly and it burns hot because it's plastic, basically. So we did tell Rose Sewer Service that it's your porta potty. It's probably insured. You go ahead and pay for it. And what we found out was, no, it doesn't work that way. It's their porta potty. It's on our property. And since it's on our property, we have to pay for it, but it gets submitted to our insurance carrier. Mary, anything you want to add to this?
No, just a matter of paying for the porta potty, getting reimbursement for the league.
Okay. Sounds good. And so did you want to make this a motion?
I'd like to approve the, uh...
Make a motion to, yep, pay Rose Sewer Service?
Pay Rose Service. I can't even find it here. It's too little. To pay Rose Service, Service for the potty. And so that, that will allow us to get reimbursed by the league.
Okay. Sounds good. And so do I have a second to that motion? Second by Larry? Further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And I'm on to the next item, which is a resolution. It's the fire department. It looks like we're confirming the chief's fire department members and their pay. We do this by resolution. Everybody comfortable with this? Troy, this is your baby?
Yep.
You're comfortable with this? Everybody else is comfortable? So I'm going to call for a motion then to approve resolution. It is 220201, and we are confirming the fire department members and their pay for 2022. So motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
By, by Troy. Second by Larry. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And I'm on to the next item on the agenda. This is a grant. So Troy, you want to walk us through this, please?
Sure. It's just, uh, resolution 2022, accepting grant funds for the fire department from Walmart. We do this on a, on a regular basis, on a yearly basis. Um, yeah. Do you want to add to that?
No problem. So we always like grant money. Chief, could you comment on this? This is really done by your artwork. I don't.
I'm sorry, chief. You go ahead if you want. These are, I do have the information here. These are, uh, well, and boots to replace the old worn out PPE and helmet, mounted lights for each member.
And it's fifteen hundred dollars that we're accepting by resolution. Good job on this, Chief, you're the one that writes all the grants, I know. Okay, so everybody comfortable with this?
Yes.
And I will call for a motion then to approve resolution twenty-two oh two oh two.
I'll make the motion.
By Troy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Larry, further discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And we're on to another resolution, it's once again for the Fire Department, uh, Troy, it's another grant.
One okay, five thousand dollar non-mashing, uh, this is new pages for about half of the members.
Okay, outstanding, uh, comments from council?
Yep.
Are in favor of it, I'll call for a, a motion then to approve resolution twenty-two oh two oh three. We are accepting the grant funds, and it is for a Fire Department. It looks like, uh, two thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars, so do I have a motion to approve? By Troy, do I have a second?
Second.
By Larry? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you.
That grant was written for the Supply Airbags last year.
Okay, but is that the right dollar, the twenty-four forty-eight? Okay, perfect, so we'll make sure that that reflects what that was actually to be used for. So I've got a motion from Troy, I believe, and I think I got a motion, a second from Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And we're on to an item now, this is training. And this is something that Larry can talk to because he is the personnel liaison, go ahead, Larry.
Uh, yes, this is, uh, MNCI Training for Clerk Treasurer for Year Three of Three. Uh, training in twenty twenty was canceled due to COVID, moving Year Three training from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two. Uh, Year Two is virtual, the cost of this is approximately four hundred and fifty dollars for registration. Training is five days in St. Cloud, so accommodations will be necessary as well, uh, as they were in two thousand nineteen. So, uh, the motion is to approve MCI training, MNCI training, uh, Year Three to Three Clerk Treasurer Training for Five Days at the Beginning of May, two thousand twenty-two, at an estimated, at an approximate cost of five hundred dollars and reimbursement, reimbursement of hotel accommodations. We have a training budget to cover the cost.
Perfect, so I've got a motion by Larry, do I have a second?
Second.
By Mary, further discussion?
I would, I think that's great, I would like to, uh, congratulate the council on looking forward for the history, uh, or looking forward to the future for our Clerk Treasurer instead of looking back.
More training, excellent, and I agree, thank you for that, I've got a motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And we're on to the next item, this is a, uh, looks like Public Works request here, this is Mary and myself. Mary, you want to speak to this?
I just know that, and I cannot get mine to build in because I, I know that Chris was responsible to send in what he
Yep.
was planning to spend on these, but the April would be a virtual class this time. He had sent me, given Elizabeth the information. Um, the other thing is that would be for the sewer school, his regular license.
Correct.
And then Paul will be taking in April another class that will give him his water license.
So that'll come up on the next meeting's agenda.
Exactly.
Okay, so for tonight, this is just Mike, he is renewing his license, it's like continuing education.
Correct.
Okay, everybody in favor of this?
Yes.
Okay, and this is two hundred dollars, it's paid for from our training fund. So I'm going to call for a motion to approve the request from our Public Works Superintendent, Mike Criss, to, uh, do the virtual training for his sewer license B. And, uh, it's at a cost of two hundred dollars, I didn't say that already, so a motion to approve?
Yes.
Thank you, Troy, and a motion by Larry, a second by Mary, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And we're on to a temporary liquor license, this is for the...
Could I just get some clarification?
Go ahead.
Clerk, so you are only approving the virtual school for Mike Criss?
Correct.
But you're not approving Part B, the school for Paul Steiner?
That's correct.
Okay.
We'll bring that back to the March meeting.
All right.
Thanks for asking. Okay, so we're looking at a temporary liquor license, it's for the St. Croix Valley Orchestra. They are using this, they'll be, uh, it's a fundraiser event, it is at Taylor's Falls Community Center. Looks like it is on April thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. I think all the paperwork is in order, everybody comfortable with the request?
Yes.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion on this one?
Uh, make the motion to approve temporary liquor license for the St. Croix Valley Orchestra on April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-two.
Very good, got a motion, I have a second.
Second.
By Mary, those in favor? Aye opposed, motion carries. We are on to the, second to the last item. It is contracting with Shisago County for Building Inspector. Uh, this has taken a long time to come forward because some things just take time. Uh, contract in this particular case has been looked at by both our attorneys and by Shisago County. What's happened is Jack Kramer is retiring, semi-retiring. He will no longer be doing any work in Shisago County, he will in Washington County. We have contacted Steve Heff and myself, Shisago County, to find out if they would provide the service, the building inspector. They have agreed to, they will actually retain seventy-five percent of the fee that's collected, just like Jack Kramer did. City retains the other twenty-five percent. Uh, Jack Kramer is going to continue to work on any open building permits that are out there right now. So when Shisago County takes over, it'll be just new permits at takeover. So is everybody comfortable with the contract, they're comfortable with contracting with Shisago County?
Very.
Yes, very, excellent, okay, so I'm going to call for a motion to approve the contract with Shisago County. It is for the purpose of building and septic system inspections. It will take effect tomorrow, March first. And Jack Kramer will complete the building inspectors on those, building permits on those that are currently open. So do I have a motion to approve this?
No.
By Mary, do I have a second?
Second.
By Troy, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And we're on to the last item which has been added, this is a request that Troy is making, go ahead, Troy.
Uh, yes, uh, in light of the, um, data breach investigation and the, um, no non-city employees or volunteers, right, are, um, allowed behind the counter, I would like to suggest that we, um, post in, um, a position, a permanent part-time deputy clerk position. Uh, there have been people tonight, as in, um, Mr. Galt talking about his water bills not coming in. Uh, we've had people mention the website not being updated. I know the, um, the Clerk Treasurer is right now working on an audit, uh, that's keeping her very busy. Uh, and I do want to compliment Deb Jewett-Hein, uh, when she talked about coming together for the common good. And I think that includes public service and making sure our services are available to the public. And I think the best way to go about that is to actually hire and post a position of permanent part-time deputy clerk.
Okay, thank you, Troy, um, Mary, comments on this?
Um, I, I have no recommendation here or there, but we didn't budget in for a person this year.
Actually, it is very much in, if I understand correctly.
It is, it is much in, it is.
But I mean, it's part-time.
Yeah, no, it'd be part-time.
Okay.
Um, before I ask Larry, I'll weigh in myself on this because the investigator Solo's report said that this position is one that can be done in forty hours a week. It actually has been by past clerks that have worked for the city. And the auditors, Abdo and Eck, have also said that this is actually a forty-hour, uh, a week job position. I've asked them if we should have additional help, their recommendation is nope. Uh, so myself, I'm a no on this for now, I will come back to it, but for now, I'm a no. So, uh, Larry?
Well, I think it's, it's a suggestion in that, but at this point, I don't think we're ready to move forward with, you know, actually appointing, you know, an assistant. Uh, it may be discussion for a meeting, uh, another meeting further down the road, but for right now, I don't think we need to, uh, address this issue.
So should we table this?
We have a vision, this now, we're looking quite at it already, whether it's volunteers or deputy, deputy clerk. And I, and I have heard that before, that our auditor, is that Brad? He spells it correct?
Aldisack.
Aldisack, okay, um, he's mentioned that before, I think, somebody else had mentioned that, he did. Um, I, I saw that in some minutes where he felt that, uh, this job should be done, you know, could be able to be done in forty hours, the hours that, that are a lot at night. I guess, I know, I know he's an auditor, I don't know about his experience in time management or human resources or for that effect, any of the other people that you mentioned, so, um...
Okay, so do you want to make a motion to approve it?
Well, I would certainly make a motion to approve this.
Okay, so do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a second, by Mary, further discussion, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Aye, so that's three no's, one yes, that motion fails. So with that, uh, just so the press is aware of it, what was handed to Troy, and yes, it is public information, it has to do with the invoice for the investigation, self-soto. And I can tell you, I haven't seen anything yet, I haven't signed anything yet, so I have no idea what the cost of that investigation will be. Um, I'm sure you can check with our treasurer and ask, and when it comes in, I'm sure she's happy to tell you, so.
And I just have a question, the investigator that was passed tonight, or the investigation, anyway, will that, is that covered by OMC or the Taxpayers Bank for that?
Uh, good question, Chad?
I believe it would be covered by the Taxpayers Assembly, the Michelle Solo was.
Right.
However, that, that's a fair, fair question to ask and should be clarified with the Minnesota Cities.
Good question, thank you, Troy. Okay, so with that, we've hit everything on the agenda, it's been a long night, thank you for your patience and your comments. Uh, for roundtable discussion, I'll just hit for myself, I only have one thing, and that's, uh, I've had the personnel liaisons call their commission meetings to order this year. Uh, that's not unusual, I understand that three of the four commissions have been called to order, they're up and running. The only one that is not is the Planning Commission, that is one that Ross is responsible for. Uh, once he returns and once the Planning Commission has a need to meet, he'll call that meeting to order, they'll be up and running, and we're good to go. So that's all that I've got, uh, we'll start with Mary, anything new?
Um, I wanted to point out, Troy, just for consideration, I didn't know that there was any budget for a person because I didn't have to take, the, the budget trainings were not mandatory, and I had, I was on a count for work. So I didn't know that there was any budget for it, so I just wanted to clearly outline that. That's why I said, that's why I couldn't make a decision.
No problem.
Um, the other thing is that, um, that we met as a, a public, uh, partner, Rex, and we have, um, talked about Kevin is going to, um, look at the potential of adding more peonies to the garden.
Good.
And, uh, Tanner has to work on a budget, and, and that basically will hit it for March.
Perfect, we're good to go, anything new, Troy?
Uh, no, EDC did meet, uh, last week, so that's good, we got to start.
Good, thanks for calling, I'm here.
Sure.
Thank you, Larry.
Um, I have just a couple of things, on the HPC side, we did meet, and, um, Jerry Anderson has agreed to be chair for another year.
Good.
Um, Joanne Hunsmeyer has agreed to be vice chair, and, um, Molly Ivris, uh, keep wanting to call Molly Ivris, Molly Ivris, um, has agreed to be continuous secretary.
Very good.
And one other thing, um, you know, this, this is a great meeting because everybody came together and expressed their opinions, and I think that's the first step in moving forward. And, you know, I mean, we maybe agree to disagree or disagree to agree, however you want to put it. But I ran across something this week that I wanted to maybe read to everybody and have it, have us leave on a somewhat of a more upbeat mood. This is a poem that was written by, um, Mrs. Jean Sampson, longtime resident of West Street, who loved the St. Croix Valley. And in, um, let's see, when did she write this, back in the nineteen eighties, she wrote this poem, Spring on the St. Croix. The St. Croix Valley is warmed by the shining sun. The winter damage of the snow and ice is done, we hope. The lone eagle is soaring above the trees, the splendid pine boughs are bouncing in the breeze. The majestic St. Croix weaves its winding way through ledges of rock left from an ancient day. The devil's chair is perched high for all to see, as the columbine waves and attracts the humming bee. The St. Croix River flows and falls, the old man of the dell looks downward over all.
Very good, thank you, Larry, and Chad, thank you for coming this evening. We concluded, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, by Mary, second by Larry, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, we are adjourned, thank you.
Debbie.